Welcome to tonight's study session of August 21st, 2023. First off is city council reports. Councilor Zadi? Councilor Seymour?
Monday afternoon, I don't know if we reported on this last week. Mayor Protem and I were at the ribbon cutting for the Doral Academy. That was also part of a chamber event. On Wednesday, I attended Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation Board Meeting. Still good news on baseline construction information that some of the businesses there give as far as... Right now, if you wanna, if you wanna buy a brick from Summit Brick, they will have it ready for delivery in March. They're stacked up with work, so that bodes well for the construction economy still going well in the greater area. They are working on some unique products, so it's also very good to hear from some of the economic development people in that group, including commercial lenders, private lenders, and the fact that the information on potential recession in their, in their mind keeps getting bumped out a quarter and a quarter and a quarter, and it looks like first quarter of next year might, might bode well for more people in the economy and hopefully some relief on interest rates, but not until then. Dropped by early on the celebration, 21st birthday of Christopher Fields. Bill doesn't look a year over 22, so he used that to his advantage. And then that evening, I attended Special Permits and Licensing Board. They approved a, a new business at 100th and Wadsworth Rec Room. It is a pool hall with 22 pool tables and a snooker table, which they're very proud of because they mention that quite often. So that'll be a new business taking up a space that's been empty for quite some time in that strip center on the lower level. And they, they're, they've had former liquor licenses and had a great review, so they were granted that license that night. And Friday evening, the Mad Rabbit Distillery in Westminster on 108th had celebrated their eighth anniversary, so good for them. It was one of the first distilleries in our city, and so they hosted an anniversary that evening. And then on Saturday, our Coffee with Residents Covenant Village, I'm sure other people report on that. That is a group that pays attention to what's going on in our city, so that was, we could've gone on for another hour or two. And then that evening, the Sea Fire Snooze Event for to fight cancer at Snooze that evening, which it's now well-known that I overpaid for macadamia on that brittle, so people know I'm, I'm an easy mark. So that's it for that week.
Councilor Evans?
Busy week, along with Councilor Seymour, Wednesday attended the Civic Academy for their graduation, and it was great to listen to everything that they did and what they liked about the Civic Academy. It seems like the fire department and the courthouse were still top of list, seems to be every year, so kudos to staff for a great, I believe it was 10, 10 weeks long, so really great that there's still a great bunch of people that, when you start something, it's, it's interesting to see who finishes, and it seemed like most everyone finished from the start. So that was really great. Thursday was North Metro Arts Alliance was a fairly quick meeting. They were checking, they were super busy, they're getting ready for Arts Week at the end of September from September 23rd through the 30th with Westminster. They were looking at using the rodeo building along with Westminster, but rodeo building is under an RFP slash qualifications process, so that's in its own right underway, so they couldn't use rodeo building, but they're doing lots of great activities. All of that will be promoted either through social media or on our website, and it was listed in our activities guide just as a information piece to residents. And then Saturday, attended the great robust discussion with Covenant Village for Coffee with Residents, or Covenant Living Facility with Coffee with Residents, really great questions, went the entire time, really engaging and really involved, as Counselor Seymour mentioned. And then went to the MONG Festival, which is great. I've never had an opportunity to attend upon the invitation of the mayor, went with her, and really great experience. Lots of, lots of people, even though it was boiling hot, they were all out there having fun and learned about topspin, such an awesome sport. If you haven't, it's like a cross between like yo-yo and like, I don't even know, but it was so, so fun to watch. And then later that night, went to Sea Fire with Counselor Seymour and the mayor. So overall, really busy week, so.
Councilor Baker? Mayor Protem?
Like Counselor Seymour mentioned, we did forget last week that he and I attended the ribbon cutting for Doral. Great excited crowd, fantastic facility now in our city. I know that they were in the city before, but their new facility is beautiful. So excited to have them stay in Westminster, and that was what I shared with them when they had me speak, so. Civic Academy graduation, one thing that I would mention that shined to me in the comments that folks made was the amount of care that the staff takes in being transparent and that it was clear to them that they take extra steps to make sure that they're being good stewards of the tax dollars. So the fact that that, we always get a really good review anytime I've visited one of those academies, whether it's police, fire, civic, but this messaging, I think, was a little bit different as far as what they shared that they got out of it. Still positive, but I think that those are things that this council has been after in our city management. So I thought that was really awesome that that is showing through to the residents who took the 10 weeks of their time to join our staff. So thanks again to staff for putting that on, it was very valuable to those residents who went through it. I then also, on Saturday, attended the Butterfly Pavilion Gala. Manager Freitag was there as well, as well as Clerk Fitch, and it was great to be able to be with those folks. They did recognize the many decades of partnership that the city has shared with them. I know, you know, we're not extremely pleased that they're leaving Westminster, but I will say that they're, it looks like they're doing very, very well as an organization and it sounds like their fundraising is going well. I know that they, it wasn't specifically for the new property that they did their gala, they do that every year, but it seemed like a very successful event, it was very well-attended and pretty, pretty fancy, to be honest. It was, it was a lot of fun, so I was glad to be able to be there and continue to support them because I think they're a good community partner.
Councilor Nabel?
So I had to miss the Civic Academy graduation because I was over at Dr. Cog. And so the, on the docket for last Wednesday was we approved the 24, 2024 to 2027 Transportation Initiative Program. So there's hundreds of millions of dollars that will be spent over the next four years for that period, and then they'll have another round starting up in 2026, so every couple of years they'll have calls. So, so let's see, and that was a very long process, four different calls for projects over the past year to get that underway. And then we had an update from the Front Range Passenger Round. So I was just thinking it might be useful at some point to have an update for the whole council on what they're doing, and I'm not as engaged. I think Mayor, you attend more of those meetings, so.
Between US 36 mayors and NADA's having them this month, so yeah. And then Mayor Peck is on that board, so we get updated all the time.
And it seems like they have a path, sort of a preference for the, the, yeah, they sort of US 36-ish corridor where, or at least where it would come through the Westminster site slash our Westminster location versus I-25. So I'm just, I'm.
It will be a tug of war of which one wins.
Yeah.
The governor wants that, to be able to grant what was voted on in 2004 to come the Northwest Railway, but don't know when that war.
Yeah, okay, so it just seems like certainly there's tensions.
Because you have that, and you also have the peak piece going on, so you've got two different rail things going on totally. So it'll be still a while.
Okay, well, interesting dynamic, they weren't overly, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say the rest of the Dr. Cog Board of Directors was overly excited with them. They have a pretty large district and some, some cities are paying into it, not really kind of understanding how they're gonna benefit from it. And so it was a little tense discussion. Then we had, I'd probably just point out, we also had Jacob, I'm gonna tell his last name, Riger from, from Dr. Cog present to us on, there's a regional bus rapid transit partnership, and that is a combination of larger entities like CDOT and Dr. Cog and RTD and Aurora and Denver, and they're working to create, one, to have greater efficiency in just regional planning for bus rapid transit, and trying to set standards for what BRT should look like in our region. I think one of the things that a few of us challenged them on was just that we don't have, they're not including in that the US 36 corridor, they're not including some, you know, like 287 when that comes online. There's things that are kind of missing from their overall network, and I would just think we were, especially with US 36 being our consolation prize, you know, as BRT along there, that it should be included in the overall regional network and the planning. So I suppose more to come on that, we did, a few of us brought that up, so.
Are they going to just have the express bus lanes or are they gonna do true BRT?
I also asked that question, and they said there's lots of different ways to define it depending on the corridor, and I thought, all right. So it's not, yeah, some of it's real BRT, some of it's not, let's just be real about it, and we'll just, you're using buses to get around.
Right.
So.
In a, in a confined lane that other people can use, and if there's an accident, you're held up?
Right, and that's not really BRT.
Right. My argument 10 years ago.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, all of ours, yeah, yeah, it's just, it's a little frustrating. But anyway, there's a partnership, and they're all planning except for actual ones that we have, they said we have, like our US 36 one, so anyway.
Christopher Fields was a great event, and the graduation, staff got nothing but kudos, kudos, kudos. Urban Drainage, I had that Wednesday, we had an item on the consent agenda and it was passed. Coffee at Covenant Village was such a rich discussion, we could've gone on, we went a little past our welcoming time, tried to honor the time that we asked them to set aside, and it was just a great crowd. The MONG Festival was, wow, they had just had another MONG Festival at Shaw Heights the weekend of the 12th, so to see what turned out here, and our police department was there, kids always love that. And then the Adams County Sheriff was just a little bit down the road, they had a volleyball tournament going on, they had the women who make the outfits and can tell you the story. They had, as Counselor Evans said, the topspin, and it's, it's just fun to watch. If anybody's ever at 72nd and Zuni at that park, and you see the MONG playing, they would welcome you to stop by and learn how to play, they love showing people. The Snooze Event was very, Sea Fire did a great job with that fundraiser to help with our firefighters that have cancer, and I believe our firefighter sales name will be on the memorial this year down at Colorado Springs in September, so brings it home that, why we do that kind of fundraising. For me, I haven't reported the last couple of weeks because I've just been on a merry-go-round, seeing every kind of doctor there is to see. I think the merry-go-round's stopping, I have a piece of cancer in my leg associated with everything I'm dealing with, and they want to do radiation. So in order to do that, I can take nothing else while I'm doing that, and that will be 10 visits, and then I have to wait a full week, and then I can finally start the second pill. But the first one I'm taking right now, and my blood work today looked really good, so I'll take that, and, but I can't take that pill for those 10 days either. So this is just how it works, I don't ask for all the science about it, I just shake my head and say, just tell me what I'm to do, when I'm to do it, let's get this done. So tomorrow I get fitted, I don't, don't know if I get a tattoo tomorrow for my mark in my leg, but they're, they make something that will hold the leg the exact same way every time I go in for 10 days, and so that's what I do tomorrow, and don't have a date when I start that, so that's all I have on me. And for you, what do you have for us?
Okay, next slide, please, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, just a quick couple of items. So first of all, great program here, I wasn't tracking it, and so this is pretty neat, but in partnership with a nonprofit called Solar United Neighbors, the city launched a program called Solar Switch, and this is a group buying program for solar installations. And so they offer both residents and businesses hassle-free way to install rooftop solar panels and battery storage at a discounted price, and this is key, you essentially receive approximately a 22% project savings compared to the open market, and that, that can make a difference certainly on your return on investment. So registration goes throughout from now until the end of September, actually October 2nd. If you want to look and learn more, go to solarswitch.com/westminster. Next thing, Housing Needs Assessment, we've been talking for that for a while. We have selected a contractor, that contractor is called Matrix Design Group, and so they'll execute that assessment for us. They are a full-service planning and design firm with in-house expertise to support GIS modeling, housing inventory analysis, economic forecasting, and community education and engagement. And so over the next four months, we expect them to work that process and provide that back to us by the end of December. Next slide. Some Westy wins, as mentioned tonight, Civic Academy graduation, that was this past Wednesday. It was third annual Civic Academy Program Dinner and Graduation Ceremony, 16 total participants, and there were eight sessions, 20 hours, 12 departments and divisions, two driving tours, and six different city facilities where they conducted those training sessions, so that was outstanding. Glad that the city does that and will continue to do that. And then we also hosted this summer the Leave No Trace Summer Photography Contest, and those winners have been announced. The three winning pictures are on the right there, absolutely stunning, but 500 submissions from residents, 250 votes, and the Leave No Trace winners there on the right, but the names, Sarah Lundberg was first place for grand prize, second place went to Stephen Stifuke the third, and third place was Donnie O'Neil. And so just really, really glad that we were able to do this program and a nice way to celebrate our natural beauty here in Westminster and in larger in Colorado. But they are displayed out here in the City Hall Lobby, and we've invited our winners to come pick up their prizes. So a great campaign hosted by our communications team this summer. Next slide. Some things to know, Planning Commission goes this Tuesday, tomorrow, 7 to 9 p.m. here in Council Chambers. There is a public meeting on Thursday evening to discuss the adaptive reuse of Sheridan Green Elementary School. That's from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at Sheridan Green Elementary School. And if you want to learn more about, you know, what this process looks like and what we've already done over the course of the summer, you can go to our city website slash Sheridan Green. Coming up on Friday evening, Neighborhood Nights, that's August 25th, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at Irving Street Library. And our next city council meeting is Monday, August 28th, beginning at 6:30 with the pre-meeting right here in Council Chambers. Next slide. No information-only items this evening, and so again, if you want to give us a call, contact us, ask questions, make recommendations, we're more than interested in hearing from the public and the community. You can contact me at my office, 303-658-2006. You can email me at mfreitag@cityofwestminster.us, and as always, follow us on X, like us on Facebook, check us out on Instagram, ring our bell at Next Door, and as always, we certainly want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, accountable. Got any questions, that's all I have this evening.
I see no questions.
Okay, all right.
That brings us to the first concept plan review tonight is for the following development proposal. Walnut Grove Duplex is located at 9,000 West 108th Avenue. This is a concept plan review, it is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about a proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on the city council's general impressions of this proposal. In accordance with Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will provide a brief introduction, and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback on the proposal. And I star this, especially with the phone calls I received today with misinformation of what we're doing tonight. City council comments on the proposal are gratuitous in nature and not, I repeat, not binding on city council, the planning commission, the city staff, or the applicant. So may we begin?
Interim Planning Director John McConnell, go ahead, John.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, the city councilor, John McConnell here, and I'm the interim planning manager, and I'll facilitate this concept plan review for you. The project is located on the southwest corner of West 108th Avenue and Wadsworth Parkway in the Walnut Grove subdivision. The property is 10.69 acres and was zoned PUD as a part of the original Walnut Grove Preliminary Development Plan and Subdivision. It's designated as medium-density residential in the 2040 comprehensive plan. The proposed development includes 62 single-family attached two-story duplex-style dwelling units. The PDP amendment proposes to change the land use of the 10.69-acre lot from the senior residential use approved in 2021 to single-family attached residential. The applicant provided the site plan that is shown on this slide with their pre-application submittal. You can see the 62 proposed units with an internal looped access drive. The Rocky Mountain Municipal Airport Critical Zone is shown at the northeast corner of the property with that red line. The drainage way required by Mile High Flood District is shown along the west side of the property indicated with the red dash line. Here you can see one of the single-family attached architectural renderings that were provided with the pre-application submittal. Notice was provided for the concept plan review tonight, the applicant posted three signs on the property and mailed over 1,300 notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window, all required notifications took place on or before August 10th, 2023. For the applicant to pursue development of this property, they would need to process two development applications, a preliminary development plan amendment changing the land use from senior housing to a single-family attached, and an official development plan. This concludes the staff introduction and overview, the applicant is present and ready to present their concept plan review.
Perfect. Welcome.
All right, awesome, thank you so much. Well, thank you so much for that uh comprehensive uh presentation of our uh project here introducing uh Walnut Grove Filing Thirteen. Really appreciate it, John. Uh, so I guess uh I'll start with introductions here. My name is Ben Jock. I'm a forward planner with Polty Homes. Uh, we have Corey Hunzider, who is also with Polty Homes as well. Uh, we have Trey Farrell with uh Kim Lee Horn and we also have Kiggy McCormick with Kim Lee Horn. Uh, Kim Lee Horn does all of our planning and engineering for this project. So we wanted to make sure, we had all of our consultants tonight, even though, you know, this might be a more informal meeting. We wanted to make sure that uh any questions that you may have uh can be answered. Uh, it's just to give everyone a quick introduction as to who Polty Homes is. Uh, we are a residential home builder. We do everything residential from uh entry-level housing all the way up to uh active adult and retirement communities. Uh, we do it all. Um, you may be familiar with one of our uh active adult communities in Broomfield named Anthem. It's a one of the larger active adult communities in Colorado and one that we're extremely proud of. Uh, so we're, again, we're excited to be here. Um, we're really looking forward to showing off what we've been uh kind of cooking up in our lab for uh Walnut Grove Filing Thirteen. So on this slide, John did such a great job with his previous presentation. I really don't need to reiterate um a lot of that information in the left column. But I will give a little bit of history about uh Walnut Grove Filing Thirteen. Uh, this parcel was previously annexed into the city of Westminster back in the nineteen seventies. It's been owned by the same family for the last fifty years. It's it's also uh or and it's remained vacant throughout its lifetime. So uh certainly um there's a reason why it's been vacant while the rest of the master plan has been developed. But uh we'll dive into those details later on in the presentation. So like John said, this is going to be a for-sale um market rate duplex community. Uh, we chose duplexes specifically for this parcel uh for a couple reasons. Uh, if you actually look on the slide up here, you can see photos of the Walnut Grove neighborhood. You can see that there's a good mixture of duplex homes and single-family detached homes uh shown in this master plan and neighborhood. We feel that duplexes really uh fit kind of the character of this neighborhood as it is. Uh, you can also see that there is a duplex community just on the western boundary of uh filing thirteen. Uh, we think this is a great opportunity to do a continuation of those duplexes in our parcel. Uh, we actually met with the uh H O A of that community as well. And, you know, I'm not trying to speak for them, but uh they seemed generally supportive of what we're proposing. One resident even uh mentioned that they may be buying in our into our community. So always great to hear some positive feedback. Uh, we also have to look at uh what's considered kind of an attainable housing price uh for this because that's another reason why we picked duplexes uh for this property. So if you turn to the next slide, uh, what we have here is a aerial map of the Stanley Lake area, kind of northwest and Westminster. Uh, this map shows pretty much all the resale pricing with each neighborhood uh around the Stanley Lake area. Uh, we think if these homes were to come out uh in today's market, uh, the average price of these homes would be about six hundred thousand dollars or around there. This is pretty much in line with what the resale market is doing. As you can see in the kind of shaded area where our project is, the average price of the Walnut Grove neighborhood uh resale home is five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars with an average build date uh from the nineteen eighties. Uh, we feel that this really, uh, if these homes were to come out today, this would be offering a lot of value considering what the resale market is doing. We we think that this is an attainable price for home buyers today. Uh, obviously, we're speaking in terms of today. This project would not come online for the next couple of years. But we're trying to maintain uh this type of pricing that's closely in line with what resales are doing. Uh, if you turn to the next slide, we also have to look at the context of what the new home market is doing as well. Uh, first thing I'll note right off the bat, you can see that there's a large gap kind of in between the Arvada area shown on the south side of the map versus the Broomfield area uh shown on the north side of the map. A large gap of new home supply. We would be help uh, we would be helping fill this supply by offering a family-oriented product at a comparable price as a lot of these new home builds. We're we're extremely confident that this can help bridge uh that supply gap within the area and uh also provide another product for um families and a lot of entry-level buyers as well. So if you go to the next slide, this is mostly for everyone's reference, but this is just uh basically a price graph showing uh what kind of the resale market and new home market is doing in the surrounding area. Uh, you can see that the Polty Homes uh uh pricing is in blue on this graph. And all it's showing is what the pricing for a floor plan is based on square footage. And you can see we're generally below those two resale and new home closing average lines. Next slide. So this is kind of the uh best part of the job of uh working at a home builder. Uh, we're coming up with some conceptual architecture designed specifically for Walnut Grove Filing Thirteen. Uh, I'll kind of take you through what we have uh right now planned or in concept. Uh, so we're planning on offering four floor plans, which each are going to offer three to four bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms. And we're also considering adding uh an unfinished basement with these homes. Uh, these homes will al- some of these homes will also include a built-in side patio, which is uh definitely unique for this style of housing, along with a fenced-in side yard for homeowners who want to let their dog out during the winter or have a kind of a grilling area during the summer. Our homes are also Energy Star certified, three point one, meaning that they're more energy efficient than your uh prototypical standard new home product on the market today. Our homes will also offer um solar solar-ready options as well as electrical vehicle charging station optional as well, as well as a tankless water heat heating uh options too, to help save on energy. These homes in general will be fairly low maintenance, given the uh size of the lot. They'll have a small yard, so that means low water usage. Uh, let's take a look at our concept plan here on the next slide. So like John said before, this was the original concept plan that we submitted to the city back in June for pre-application review. Uh, it's a plan that we're extremely proud of. Uh, you know, I'll kind of take you through what we really love about this plan. First of all, it's a sixty-two unit duplex community with access off of one hundred and eighth Avenue. Uh, what you'll immediately notice is that there's a lot of open space associated with this plan. Uh, you can see that noted kind of along the western boundary where we have that drainage corridor that uh buffers ourselves from the existing neighborhood to the west as well as provides um provides a great open space area and view corridor for our homeowners. Uh, another item that we really love about this plan is the trail connectivity as well associated with it. You can see on the southwest corner of that map that there's a little regional trail that runs along Walnut Creek that we tie into. Uh, really great thing for uh, you know, people who love to jog, people who love to take their dogs out on a walk. Uh, certainly for someone like me, this would be, this would be a huge value add to this community. We also include an amenity and play area kind of uh centered on the site. Uh, we're still thinking about what we want to do with this area, but we've thrown around ideas such as a shaded picnic area, grilling area, uh, maybe some uh play equipment too for uh the kids in this community, but still deciding that. Um, but possibilities are endless with that amenity area. So the city has already reviewed this concept plan and has given us comments based off of um the Westminster Design Guidelines as well as additional requests they'd like to see uh fulfilled if we want to move forward with this project. So next slide, please. Like I said before, uh Walnut Grove Filing Thirteen has sat vacant for the last fifty years and has been the last remaining vacant parcel in the Walnut Grove Master Plan for the last eighteen years as well. Um, there's a reason for this and it's not necessarily because it's a difficult parcel to develop, but there's just a lot of um challenges with uh just uh development challenges that we have to overcome um based on some asks from uh the city and uh city staff. So I'll take you through uh kind of those bullet points along the left side of this uh slide. Uh, right off the bat, we, right off the bat, we have to dedicate three specific areas to uh city uses or for open space. So uh kind of that number one area is, like John noted before, is that drainage easement uh or drainage corridor along the western boundary of our project. Uh, this bound- this corridor would serve the uh future drainage of the Ball Aerospace Office Campus just north of our project. Uh, happy to accommodate this request. We think this is actually um uh adds extra value to this community by giving us, again, another buffer between existing neighbors and also giving us kind of a view corridor too between our two neighborhoods. Uh, the next item I'll also point out is that we cannot build within that northeast corner as it is within the airport critical zone boundary. Uh, if you're not familiar with this boundary, it's essentially the uh area in which an aircraft would enter and exit as they take off and land in within uh Rocky Mountain Airport. Uh, we accommodated this request, uh, but I will note that um there are several neighborhoods that are already built within this critical zone boundary. And uh there are several uh office buildings that are four or five stories tall, also near the uh runways of the Rocky Mountain Airport that are within this boundary as well. But we did accommodate it with our latest concept plan. Uh, the next item I'll point out too is that staff has asked us to uh physically dedicate one point eight six acres of property along the uh southern boundary of the uh of the project. We've asked city staff if we can do a cash and lieu alternative, which they seemed open to. But, you know, when you add up those first three points that I just went over, that represents about forty percent of our total project area that's uh being dedicated to city uses or open space. Uh, the next point I'll go over too is that we've been asked to also include a public roadway within this uh community. This was a request by staff as well to have maybe like a central public roadway that where all of our homes can uh have access to. Right now, our site has um mostly private roadways other than the entrance off of one hundred and eighth Avenue. We feel that private roadways are a little bit more appropriate for this small enclave versus a public roadway, which is designed for more of a larger neighborhood. But I'll I'll show everybody what I mean on the next slide. So the next point, point number five, is we've been asked also for our eastern homes along our eastern boundary to face Wadsworth Parkway. Uh, this is difficult to accommodate just because um we feel that it'd be the homeowner's preference to not view the uh state highway in Wadsworth Boulevard and would rather view uh landscaped corridors as they they're shown right now. Uh, the last request that we've been asked to accommodate to is um we've been asked to build a six-by-four reinforced concrete box culvert or a drainage pipe underneath one-third of one hundred and eighth and Avenue. Uh, this is needed for whenever Ball Aerospace decides to expand their campus uh just north of our project. But um it doesn't really serve a purpose right now if we build out one-third of a culvert and the existing drainage is also is already being handled uh through existing infrastructure in that open space. So these are a lot of the challenges that we have to face with this project. Uh, we'll move on to the next slide. So we attempted to try to meet every single request that was made for our project and this is kind of the result of that. Uh, right off the bat, you'll notice that this is now forty unit, a forty-unit project because we have to dedicate uh forty percent of our projects to uh different uses and open space. Uh, this is certainly development prohibitive for us since it increases the uh development cost per unit by about fifty percent. So certainly um difficult challenge to overcome on our end. We've also included a, the smallest-sized public roadway along the center of the site. As you can see from here, this represents a huge addition in paving to the entire site as well as um it's it's certainly, it's certainly an overdesign for a small enclave like this. Uh, public roads, or at least the smallest public roadway, is designed to accommodate up to twenty-five hundred vehicles a day with a design speed of thirty miles an hour. Certainly, um, we feel that it's maybe not appropriate for the small of the site. We've also shown our homes to facing Wadsworth Boulevard just to show everyone what that would look like. Um, as I said before, uh, this is, there's a lot of challenges that are associated with the site if we have to meet every single request that's being asked, um, which are not based on municipal code. But we do think that, you know, w- we have some sort of uh, well, we have a compromise plan that kind of balances the two together where, you know, we're obviously trying to meet every uh request staff makes of us because we understand that uh they have the public interest in mind. So here's kind of the resultant concept plan if we meet some of these items. So this is our latest concept plan. Uh, we think that this is a great compromise between the requests that staff has made on our project as well as maintaining a livable uh site with where we can actually achieve that attainable pricing we talked about earlier in the presentation. Like I said before with the previous, well, with the first concept plan, we really like this plan too because uh homes face landscaped corridors and open space mostly. There's better pedestrian circulation as well associated with this plan. You can see in the dark gray um dashed lines that we have circulation going through open space and landscaped areas versus along public or private roadways. You can also notice that we intentionally overparked this plan. So we're offering, I believe, about two hundred and thirty-two total parking spaces, uh, which represents r- really roughly about four spaces per lot. Uh, we did this intentionally because we want this to uh cater to a family, like a family homeowner. So we want folks to be able to invite their relatives and friends over throughout the year. We also included an amenity area at the northeast corner of our project. Uh, we did this specifically since uh one of the staff commented they wanted our project to present well from Wadsworth Boulevard. And we think we can do uh beautifully landscaped amenity off the corner there. So our project will show well uh to any passersby's on one hundred and eighth Avenue in Wadsworth. This will also be a great hangout area for the commu- uh, the residents of our community as well as any folks who are waiting at the bus stop at the north uh east corner of our project. So that really concludes our presentation. Um, I understand everything is non-binding within this meeting, but would certainly like to hear if uh, hear council's thoughts and first impressions of kind of what our compromise plan is and would love to get your feedback on this uh project. Thank you so much for your time this evening. We have our uh consultants and we'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Answer your bell?
Questions, but more comments.
Okay.
Um, so thank you, I would say. My my first home was a Polty Home, but it was a condo downtown Oakland, so.
Oh, well built.
Um, so I do have comments on, can you put the site plan back up?
Sure.
Because I know this is something that you're certainly curious to know or reaction to. Um, in looking at and kind of absorbing what staff has asked, I think there's some um ways to go on just developing this site plan a little bit more. I I do have a question actually for staff in that um, you know, that drainage piece that's going south through the, between the existing neighborhood and this one. I'm really disappointed to see that we wouldn't have a conn- a street connection coming through from the other development. This one's very isolated and if the one ed- entrance to one hundred and eighth is blocked off for any reason, no one can get out of this neighborhood. And so I mentioned this last time with another development, I'm really into street connections. They're really cool. So is there some reason why we can't make that happen even with this drainage? Can the drainage go a different, slightly different routes?
That connection was um was not approved with the with the previous twenty twenty-one approval for the senior housing project. I believe that was the result of um, there was some opposition from the uh adjoining neighborhood to that connection. And there were some complications crossing the uh, crossing the easement. Uh, I believe a bridge of sorts would have, would have had to have been uh constructed. Um, ultimately, the city council at that time um agreed that that connection shouldn't be made and that was just a carryover into this site planning effort, I think.
Well, people can be wrong. Um, I just, I, you know, planning principally, it, you know, principle-wise, it is not a good approach to not have these connections. But um regardless of that, thank you. What, oh, actually, with while you're up here, um, the other question I had was um there, uh, the team is assuming that fifty-nine foot right-of-way is the smallest public right-of-way. I thought we had thirty-six feet or something similar for uh. I thought we had thirty-six feet or something similar for a local road.
I I don't know the answer to that. I know that our engineering staff did give this a preliminary review and advise the applicants on street widths at that at that review.
I think the alternative was fifty-six feet that we got.
Fifty-three feet.
Fifty-three feet.
We must have. Brad Burns got like twelve.
It was one. Would require a variance to get that.
Yeah, to get the or an exception in order to get the fifty-three foot right of way public road.
There's an alley section that I believe is thirty foot wide section or twenty feet of that is pavement. But I don't believe that's public right of way.
Well, I would encourage our staff to look at how we could get the the reason I'm pushing a little bit more towards a public right right of way, but a smaller, more reasonably sized one would be that when this turns over to an HOA, having this all private streets puts a burden on those that those homeowners in the future. We're talking about twenty, thirty years when those need to be repaved. I'm seeing it now with other developments and those are our more attainable neighborhoods with condos and townhomes and this burden for paving all of this is really high. So I prefer to see public rights of way in there or at least some of that because it's a little more, I think, attainable and sustainable over time for those for that tiny little neighborhood.
And the maintenance issue was brought up by staff as part of their reasoning for why they wanted public right of way is just the width of it that we have some issue trying to accomplish with code.
I have an issue with that, too. I mean, we really should only, I mean, we can get a couple of things, like we should be looking at, you know, on-street parking. We don't have to have head-in parking, you know, if we're gonna have that wide of a road, then it should have allow for parallel parking on both sides and a lane. And even with that, even if you have eleven foot, eleven foot, twenty-two, do this with me, plus sixteen, that's thirty-eight feet curb to curb, then you know, you can have, I guess we can stretch it down to a right of way that would have maybe one sidewalk on one side. I guess that could be the fifty-three feet, but I just if we're gonna have it that wide, it should have on-street, parallel parking, cleanup, takeout, the head-in parking. And if we're not gonna have on-street parking, then we could have narrower streets and they could have the head-in parking off of it. So, you know, there's ways to be more efficient with the site plan depending on how you design the streets. And, okay, so there's that. Have any more questions, John, at the moment, but the other thing I would say is the the design of the project, it seems like well, one, those I really hate those really narrow green spaces. They're very unusable and not very pleasant to be based on too. So, you know, I would make sure that we have a minimum of at least forty feet between buildings for light access. But aside from that, the the homes kind of seem to be outward focused at all the other open spaces and doesn't feel like there's a really central community, like where is the community? And if you have these narrow little strips of green and everything else is just outward and all you see are people's garages, it's just not very just the design of it could be improved. I know you're trying to handle the where the best, you know, community open space can be and with the constraints you have, so I think that's your work, you're getting there. And the only other two comments I had was, you know, with given all of the constraints on the site with the the drainage piece and the critical zone, I think a fee and lieu could be, especially because it's right next to open space, I think a fee and lieu could be reasonable. And the what's the other one? The box culvert, I was just had a question if they could pay a fair share versus building a third of a culvert.
Oh, like cash and lieu?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't think we've posed that question to staff yet, but it's our understanding that the previous developer of this project was not or could not be or wasn't given that option, though. But we'll pose that question, though.
Thank you.
Councilor Seymour?
Thank you. So really, the biggest, as far as change that we're looking at is just the change because it's already at our rate, medium density, that is in our comp plan. So we're good there. And then just the change from senior living to single-family attached.
Correct.
Thanks for the presentation. I have a few questions. What's the target buyer profile that you're envisioning for these duplexes?
This is, you know, this product's been built by other builders throughout Metro Denver. And it really appeals to a wide range of potential buyers, singles, couples with kids, without kids, older residents that still want to do stairs and can handle all of that. So it really appeals to a pretty wide range. So we like to say it's it's family friendly because of the bedroom count and the small yard, but I don't think we have a target buyer per se necessarily that we would place specifically on here.
What about income levels for the pricing that you're looking at?
Well, it's always difficult to put pricing out, so we heard some of the questions staff asked us to put out some pricing. So this is probably two years out, so all those disclaimers evolved, but right now it's about a hundred and twenty percent of AMI is about where we're falling when we do our analysis.
And that the comparative, the the resale slide that you had? That's that's not duplexes. That's just average of all kinds of stock, right?
Right. Correct.
So do you have an idea of what the average resale or the type of building you're building for the for the duplexes? With the features and specifications that you're looking at, what's the market? Have you done a market analysis on the specific type that you're building?
Resales for duplexes, but we do have some new home competitors that do that are doing duplexes elsewhere. Not a lot of them, but KB Home is doing some duplexes at Candellis that are higher priced. Richmond's doing some duplexes in our Vatter that are a little bit lower. But there's not a lot, most of our competition frankly is townhomes because that's that's all they can get. That's the highest density on a lot of this infill site right now that works.
When the project was, when you were fearing that the project was going to be twenty units versus the sixty-two, the forty units versus the sixty-two, was that still feasible for you?
No.
It wasn't, which is why you had to rework it, right?
Yeah, we need we need more than forty units for it to be financially feasible.
And and when you looked at the features and specifications of your duplexes that you're looking to build relative to the surrounding neighborhoods, what's what does that look like?
Specs and features would.
Is it comparable or is it different in some way?
I think our our build quality would be higher. I think our lot size and energy efficiency certainly would be better than a resale home built five to ten years ago, but as far as, you know, if it's granite countertops or, you know, what kind of flooring, we do offer offer options, so we have a base standard and then we let the buyers choose where they want to put additional money if it's available, but we want to make it as affordable as we can as a as a base spec.
And last question, on the affordability piece, what kind of considerations were did you go through to arrive at the cost levels that you're looking to sell these for? Besides the market, besides the market analysis, did you try to, how how did you try to reduce this? Given the housing crisis that we're in?
So we've been, we've looked at some spec level changes for sure recently, but this luck of this product or is not designed yet. So we can probably in the iterations that'll come with design, we'll try to pull some of the cost out of the building process itself.
We've also went through, we also had a put together kind of a development budget as well for this plan and the current plan that we show here. Obviously, we're trying to cut down on costs wherever we can. For example, on this forty-unit duplex concept plan, you know, that public road represents a larger cost than a private road just because there's more pavement associated with it. So we're going through those iterations as well with our engineers. So we're we're doing everything we can to kind of minimize like paved areas or cost prohibitive development. And that's part of the reason why I brought up that culvert, you know, that's an extra cost that unfortunately is transferred to our homeowners in the end and we're going through those iterations, we're going through the design iterations of the duplexes, we're trying to get this as low as possible, especially right now with high interest rates, it's it's very difficult to sell a home, even though or even though it's a brand new home, it's still difficult just with the pricing.
No, that that makes a lot of sense. One one more last question, sorry. You mentioned that lots of the changes that staff asked you to do were not related to our code at all?
That is correct, so I, oh, yes, oh, sorry.
So from a cost standpoint, to reduce your costs, is there one change that staff is pushing for that you don't think we actually need and what is your justification for not having for not making that change? You know, one that's not correlated?
I think the biggest one is the the width of the right of way, if we could adjust the width with and the amount of payment that's required to serve the site is the biggest the biggest issue. And then, you know, the secondary to that would be, we understand we have some obligations on the on the drainage infrastructure that'll have to cross one hundred eighth, but we're a ten acre site. Ball Aerospace is a hundred and fifty acres. And that's what the site is serving. So to be equitable in that cost sharing is is part of the other.
And that's for the culvert.
Is some of the pavement cost related to the amount of parking your
Oh, the additional parking.
Yeah, the additional, the four spaces per.
Yeah, so no, there there is additional pavement that's associated with this plan. If you actually look in the data table in the top left corner, we show the total amount of roadway pavement with this plan. It's about five thousand square yards. If you were to do a comparison with the plan where we meet every single request that we've been asked, this one's fifty hundred or fifty-eight hundred square yards of total pavement. So you can see that there's a big difference of about eight hundred square yards. But to answer your question, I mean, additional parking spaces do add cost, but certainly not the same amount as if you were to have a public roadway throughout the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Emmens?
Well, I approved it when it came forward in twenty twenty-one, but this, so I went back, I like to take notes. I like to look back at certain things and this is actually a plan that reduces density. It was eighty-five units planned and now we're at about sixty-two. The one thing that I did not like even looking at this first plan, and I mentioned it when it came forward in twenty twenty-one, is the one point of access. That was the one thing, I don't care if it's a private access, I don't like having just one in and out. That's been a concern of mine and always has been even just looking back at this. So that is, I'll remain on that note, is that that one point of access is very concerning, just as a resident, I wouldn't want any kind of work being done and I don't have another access. An emergency, there's one point of access. And there was opposition from the other neighborhood adjacent that they didn't want it connecting. So I don't think that that's necessarily a good option. I know off of Wadsworth, you have to work with C dot and there wasn't a I think at the time, there wasn't C dot approval that there should be an it wouldn't warrant the traffic access from Wadsworth. So I would like us to continue pushing on C dot a little bit if we can have a maybe right in, right out. Some other access point would be helpful. Otherwise, I'm I'm fine with moving this one forward.
Just to respond quickly, we have planned, if if required, the there could be an emergency vehicle access that would be taken from Wadsworth. We'd still have to go with C dot to get access permits and all of that fun. But I would also say that the HOA reiterated when we met with them that they do not, it was one of their top, we do not want cross through traffic. So that was part of their concern when we met with them as well. So we heard that loud and clear.
Mayor Protem?
I can speak a little bit to C dot access as well. Typically, the requirement would be an eighth of a mile from one of their major intersections, which is six hundred and sixty feet, which we don't meet with our shorter eastern property line. So unfortunately, they wouldn't approve an access permit for for vehicle access for public access.
Mayor Protem?
Start backwards with my stuff since she was just talking about the access. I think the access is is a problem. I'm curious what the fire department says about that. If you look at the, I mean, it's not for for the neighborhood access, it's similar to the neighborhood next next door because they only have one in and out. But you can see it here on on the slides that they have that emergency access that goes into the back alleys. And so my my biggest concern is more so if something happened and say there's a wildfire or something cuts off that portion of access, that that's going to be an emergency access problem. So that's probably my biggest concern with the site in general. So I don't know if that is something that could be accommodated to at least have emergency access like the abutting neighborhood. I think we heard the similar thing about not having adjoining road in the last iteration of the senior homes, which I am disappointed didn't didn't make it through. I know there were people who were actually just recently asked me about that because I didn't realize that wasn't happening. So I want to get back to two other points, though. You talked about the cost and Councilor Zadi, I think, was driving towards how you could make these more affordable. In your in your concept plans, even the one original and the one that accommodates from your perspective, as much as you, you know, would like to accommodate from staff's perspective, that still keeps your cost per unit around six hundred thousand to market in today's buying dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So that original price that we showed with this slide right here was a price based on our original concept plan. If we're able to keep that key sixty-two units, certainly that would fluctuate if unfortunately, if we lose kind of the density that's shown on this other concept plan here.
It wouldn't fluctuate. It would go up and it'd be cost prohibitive. So we, yeah, we couldn't sell houses.
That's what I kind of figured, but I wanted to make sure you kind of already in your in, so I guess my question really is the dollars that you have. You you're accommodating the if staff goes with our changes, that's what allows you to have that attainable price from your perspective.
It's the unit, yeah, the unit count of being around sixty.
Thank you. And then the last thing, and I know that with the critical zone, you have this, you know, address, and I think that was one of the other areas that I have some concerns. So certainly noise from the airport is something that we've been dealing a lot with. And, you know, the critical zone is one piece of that, and I saw the notes from the airport. You know, and that's not unsimilar from the same kind of feedback they've given other developments that have moved forward even with the concerns. So you're kind of accommodating the safety factor here from my perspective, but there's still the noise. So I'm I'm curious with this development, you know, what kind of building products are you going to be using to try to help accommodate that noise, you know, when folks are inside their home? You're outside and there's planes. I live a stone throw from this. So like, I'm pretty sure my house isn't one of your maps up there. So I understand it and when you're outside, it is what it is when you live next to an airport like that. But I'm certainly with, you know, building material, you can accommodate some of that. And I know even some folks in the neighborhood have, you know, upgraded windows and things like that as the airport's gotten busier, and I just want to know that you're thinking about that.
So we have, we did a noise study as part of our due diligence. There's a noise attenuation levels as you get away from the airport and specifically where the traffic is going. And so you can address a lot of that with windows. Certainly, once you make air conditioning standard where people aren't opening their windows all the time, you can address some of the the noise concerns that way as well. Do you remember what the?
Yeah, wall thicknesses too. But yeah, so like Corey said, we hired a professional sound engineer to take a look at this. The airport, if you look at the letter two, I believe gave some recommendations on the thickness of the windows. I don't remember what the STC was, but we take those all into account with our new home builds.
Last question while I'm thinking about it, because while you were talking about pricing, I was just, you know, obviously Zillow's not the master vault thing, but I was looking at the abutting neighborhood and what, you know, those were going for and kind of square footage. Can you, and I'm sure it's Can you, and I'm sure it's in here, but can you remind me, what is the square footage uh range for these units?
Uh, so it's fifteen hundred square feet to uh twenty-one hundred square feet.
Okay, so very similar size units. Okay, thank you.
Councilor Baker?
Well, my first question is for our staff. I thought the parking requirements for single-family homes were two in the garage and two in the driveway.
We can speak to that. Councilor Baker, Senior Planner Amy Johnson's here, and she reviewed this project, and she can speak to the parking requirement.
Yes. So uh, the applicant provided on the proposal that we saw at the pre-application meeting, which was not this one, but um, the one that we reviewed was this one. And we reviewed it against three, the requirement for three-bedroom, single-family attached units, and they were meeting that requirement. The applicant mentioned that they were going to have uh some four bedrooms, and that would increase the requirement. The requirement for the three-bedroom, which they provided, was two spaces in the garage and one off-street parking space. And if it's, if there are four-bedroom units, those would require three uh off-street spaces, which could include garage or driveway or off-street in general.
Well, I just thought for all single fam, it was two in the garage and two in the driveway.
That is true for a single-family detached.
So by doing it attached, they avoid, because I multiplied four times sixty-two and came up with a number higher than what we had.
Yes, it's correct.
Thank you so much. Next, uh, I have to concur with the observation of Counselor Okinmermela is uh, private roads is a horrible surprise thirty years from now. Cause I think that would be a tremendous cost, wouldn't it?
It, it's, yeah, it's not insignificant, we're running budgets on that right now, but it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone. It would be part of their HOA, there would be reserves for it. And so you, from day one, you start saving for that potential cost. So, you know, it's not something that sneaks up necessarily, it shouldn't in thirty years. Uh, but we, we would plan for that in our HOA budget to, to uh provide for the maintenance of private roads if there are any.
And next, I have to follow on with what the Mayor Protem asked. How would a fire truck get through here? Holy mokes!
So I, I guess I, our, our engineer can answer that question?
Yeah, I can speak to it. Um, on our site plans, we run, um, it's called an auto turn modeling software, where we can model fire trucks on larger roads, we could do semi-trucks. Um, but access into the community does work with a, with a fire truck without needing to do three-point turns. So the, the turning radius shown uh would work for, for fire trucks. And that's also something we would work with city staff, uh, the PDP amendment process, as well as the ODP. We'd have to provide those plans proving that.
Uh, it looks like, except for the, what, five-foot wide, seven-foot wide side yards, every other green part of this development is really HOA responsibility?
Correct. So a lot of that open space would be uh maintained and mowed by the HOAs, and uh...
Yeah, but everything around the houses is gonna be.
I, I apologize, say that one more time?
Everything around the houses.
Uh, yes, so the green space shown outside of the lot, that would be uh maintained by the HOA as well.
So that would be a pretty significant burden on the HOAs.
Uh, I guess it just depends on the location. So uh, for something like an irrigated um, like landscape, uh, it's more maintenance, you have to cut that weekly. Uh, for something like native grass, uh, that you would see uh mostly in the open space shown on here, that may be, that may be needed, uh, you may need to mow that maybe twice a year. Uh, it just depends on how you landscape the area. So um, some of the landscaping could be more maintenance, uh, weekly maintenance, and some of the landscaping may only need to be maintained a couple times a year.
Yeah, we're concerned about HOA fees too, so we always look at what competing projects or neighboring resales do. We don't wanna be way out of, what, we want this stuff to be affordable, so we can't have a two and three hundred dollar monthly HOA fee. So we look at that stuff, and I'll mention as well, this site, we're not proposing a metro district for this. A lot of the neighboring ones that, you know, have metro districts, and that drives up your taxes and, and, and monthly payment as well. So when you factor all of that in, it's very competitive what we've um initially underwrote for HOA fees.
Yeah, for me, I, I think the uh, regardless of our sort of minimal parking requirements for attached products, I think that could become a neighborhood sore point very easily. And uh, the roads, I think, argue against, I would find this a good project. Thanks. It's always hard to show your, show your baby in of the public and get criticized for you.
We're here for it. It's great. It's better to hear it now than in a year from now.
Absolutely.
Can you look at your compromised, um, compromise, yeah? Airport is huge right now, that we get input on, huge. And the nearest subdivision that we hear from with the runways is quite a ways to the east of you. So my question is, if the airport's saying that's in line, how are we going to let those people know what they're buying into?
So we would do is disclosure, there'd be required disclosure in all of our buyer, to indicate what that is.
At the top page and not the fifty-sixth page, that's eight, eight-point print?
Yeah, I can't, yeah. I'm not an attorney.
I mean, it's critical. I mean, that, that's a huge issue for not only our city, but every surrounding city to Boulder, Broomfield, Superior, Louisville, Lafayette. Um, we're all dealing with that airport and its noise. And these people will be the closest that we have, um, and we're putting homes there. So I'm concerned about that. Um, I understand the point of access, but my biggest thing is with the, the way this one's configured, at least you have two rows, or four rows that face each other in two different sections, and the rest face out. And to me, it's like being ostracized from the rest of the neighborhood because your back end of your house faces the road, but you're looking out and really don't have that community feel, but that's just how I look at it. But I just don't know how we get around the airport.
Good point, Mayor.
It's a huge issue, so.
What if some of the other solutions that have been suggested for that have been, what have they, what have?
Close down the airport, or, and don't let it expand, because they're in the midst of looking at expanding it. And we don't control anything. We have a noise round table, we don't control the noise, FAA does. I mean, everything we're trying to work and be good partners with the airport, they don't control, we don't control, FAA controls, so. And then we have the lead poisoning issue that people keep bringing up because of the fuels going in and out. So trust me, we're up to here with all of that that we don't control. Um, and so putting even sixty homes right smack dab at the corner of all of this makes me shudder. Mayor Protem?
I share that, but I, I go back to the mayor's point about disclosure. I mean, to me, it's, if people decide that, because people, some people do. I've lived in that neighborhood my entire life, my folks live half a mile from me. The airplanes don't bother me, the noise doesn't bother me, I'm, I'm used to it. But, you know, I knew what I was moving into, and so if it's disclosed and people don't mind, you know, it is what it is in my, in my mind, because we do have a need for this type of product in the market from my perspective. And so, um, but I would wanna make sure, that, that's gonna be something, if you bring this back, that certainly is something that's gonna be asked in full force of how you make sure that people understand what they're buying into. And this community in general has been burnt on that from the federal government in the past. My parents are original owners, and, you know, federal government wasn't honest with home buyers about rocky flats. And, you know, they finally got some dues from that, and the lawsuit finally went through. But, I mean, it, it should've been disclosed from day one. So figuring out the proper way and going above and beyond what you have to do versus what the lawyers say you should do is probably something that I would certainly ask for if this comes back before us in an actual voting matter.
Um, just, it's hard to be the first, cause then at the end, you're like, wait. The, I also agree with the disclosure piece, and it would be best if you cannot just have it at signing of, you know, at closing, but to actually have it more posted at the beginning or something. But what you could do with that is, you know, highlight the features of the home that mitigate for the noise. So if you have thicker windows or the like, so that people know what's happening. But what you're doing is you go above and beyond would, uh, could be highlighted there. The, just a couple of thoughts, um, I, I can imagine if the neighboring development has private streets, if the street that would connect, that would make most sense to connect over is private, I can imagine that they would be concerned about the impact if it's public. Unless, you know, we, we have to plan for safety and protect all of our residents. So it's, you know, while it's an inconvenience um, in the minds of those people who live next door and would have to have a connection through, I live in a neighborhood, and I'm very happy that I have a connection. I'm at the edge of a neighborhood, and um, I know the neighborhood before wanted to close off that connection that I live on, but it's fantastic, and we all use it back and forth, and we high-five each other. So I think over time, unless it's really impactful to their private, to a private street, I would still think about how we connect through. And then if, as a public street, um, you are showing fifty-nine feet, like, as if it's all pavement. But again, I'll just emphasize, it's really only about thirty-eight feet max that you really need. And you can still have the on-street parking and reduce some of your in, uh, head-end spots. So um, I think it's still worthwhile to look at a concept that reduces the amount of private streets, because I am also concerned about the cost of this HOA. And the last question I have is um, maybe more to staff with respect to that drainage area. I know in, in my neighborhood, um, we have a drainage area that goes, goes through that's maintained um, by the city. And, you know, this is such a big area, it's serving a much larger um, development. I'm just, you know, having it be on the, the burden of this tiny little neighborhood. I mean, I know, um, Councilor Baker's neighborhood is small, and you, you know, there's all, i- it's hard um, over time for these neighborhoods as they age to be able to maintain um, these large drainage areas, regardless of if it needs to be mowed once or twice a year, it's still in the thousands. So that's just a thought to think about, a different way to maintain that um, drainage piece.
Any other questions, comments? Any last-minute anythings?
Uh, no, appreciate everyone's time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just need to state, as stated at the outset of the concept plan review, counselor comments are gratuitous. Do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Okay, so I close that concept review plan and move on to our second one. Oh, do we need a break? Good, good to go? Okay.
All right, so um, Mayor, I'll let you read your piece here, but I'll pitch it to my interim planning director, John McConnell.
The second concept plan review tonight is for the following development proposal. The Uplands filing one, block seven, parcel P A dash A seven. This is a concept plan review. It is not a hearing on a development application. Its purpose is to allow city council to learn about the proposed project in its beginning stages and provide feedback to the applicant on city council's general impressions of the proposal. In accordance with the Westminster Municipal Code, concept plan reviews occur after city staff complete the pre-application review for a proposed project, but before staff perform a technical review for the project. Technical review, which involves an official application for an ODP, PDP, or amendment thereto, will occur only if the applicant chooses to move a project forward after its concept plan review. As part of our review process tonight, city staff will propose a brief introduction, and then the applicant or its representative will present an overview of the applicant's development proposal. City council may then ask questions of the applicant and provide the applicant feedback of the proposal. City council comments on this proposal are gratuitous in nature and not binding on city council, the planning commission, city staff, or the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor Rehman. Uh, greetings again to uh Mayor, Mayor Protem and city councilors. Uh, this concept plan review is for block seven, planning area A seven of the Uplands planned unit development. The project is located within the Uplands development at the northwest corner of Eighty-Fourth Avenue and Federal Boulevard, outlined in red on this image. Block seven, planning area A seven is zone plan unit development, as well as surrounding properties to the north and the west. To the south is R one residential, and to the east is C one commercial. The property is located within the Uplands master official development plan for parcel A. The comprehensive plan designation is mixed-use neighborhood, as well as the surrounding properties to the north and west. To the south is residential low-density, and to the east is commercial. The proposed development includes the construction of approximately a hundred and twelve two-to-three-story single-family detached homes and approximately sixty-eight two-story townhomes, totaling approximately a hundred and eighty units on eighteen point six-two acres. The development also proposes a point-seven acre park. The applicant provided the site plan that is shown on this slide with their pre-application submittal. All products are alley-loaded with a centrally-located park and set back along Federal Boulevard. This slide shows the preliminary elevations of the single-family detached homes on the left and the townhomes on the right. Notice was provided for this concept plan review. The applicant posted three signs on the property and mailed the required notice letters. The notice was also posted in the Westminster window. All required notifications took place on or before August eleventh, twenty twenty-three. For the applicant to pursue development of this property, they would need to process an official, official development plan amendment. This concludes the staff presentation and overview. The applicant's present and ready to present their concept plan to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor. You want us to jump in? Terrific. Good evening. Thank you very much for having us tonight. My name is Marcus Pockner, I'm a land use and community outreach consultant for Uplands, and this is Bonnie Mizelik with uh Norris Design. We have a number of other team members here tonight that are happy to answer any questions or go through any details, but we wanted to get right to the presentation and kinda walk through it. So thanks to John and team that have been working uh very diligently on this. We are here to talk for this concept plan review of A seven. As was well described, we are on the northwest corner there of Federal and Eighty-Fourth, actually between Eighty-Fourth and Eighty-Fifth, looking at this site. We wanted to start, of course, with the vicinity map to kinda orient everybody to the particular site, but then to provide just kind of an Uplands update, a dashboard of sorts, just to kinda sort it for the community where we're at in the process, and to keep everybody apprised of how we're moving through the Uplands community and neighborhoods. Um, this probably shows, most importantly, um, what we've all brought to you before and previously that talked about the infrastructure. So just to let everybody know, as there have been comments or questions from the community, this is the infrastructure that will commence. Um, you're seeing the red is the sanitary sewer improvements that generally off of Lowell and Shaw Boulevard. In blue, you see all the water improvements and upgrades that will go throughout the site, obviously following uh roadways and really making those improvements primarily onsite and then offsite as well. You see the light, the full movement intersection on uh Eighty-Sixth and Federal. And then in green, you see the storm drainage improvements. Uh, really, again, some existing flooding issues that we're gonna be able to address on Shaw Boulevard. So this is an important, just kinda dashboard of things that are going to be happening in the coming months. This very importantly gets us to where we are tonight, but again, kinda shows the neighborhoods that we're going through. So the darker uh orange color is neighborhoods that are already in the city review process. That's before you uh adopted this kind of review process that we're here tonight, the concept review. But we think it's, it's interesting to see, cause the community has been... But we think it's, it's interesting to see because the community has been involved and going through planning commission. So B one, A two, and A four, C one A eight, C one D, and C two are all going through that separate process. Then the lighter orange, I think very important to note those as well, are now beginning in the concept review phase, right? So you start to see the whole picture of Uplands and where we're at and how A seven is coming into focus here tonight. One thing we always try to remind and go back to the community as well is the very important discussion about PLD and the decisions that were made by council. This is the same graphic that we showed there that has the totals. And I think it's just always kind of important to show that. Now, of course, each one of our separate applications, so B one, or tonight we're talking about A seven, there will be different pocket parks and different private parks that we go through. But just important to remind everybody of that PLD, making the PLD land dedication at 34.3 acres. And then again, the additional view corridor, those historic view corridors that staff in the neighborhoods worked so hard to preserve, the 6.35 acres. So that's really an update on Uplands overall and brings us tonight to the concept review. We're going to now have Bonnie walk through the pre-app plan. And then again, we're here on this site, the pre-app plan for this site today to kind of walk through that. And then we'll be here for any questions that you have.
Thanks, Marcus.
Can I run? Is this all right?
Yes, you can run away or run this slide.
I can run this slide, yes.
Great to see you all again. So we're going to talk through just a little bit on this pre-app plan and then we have continued to refine the plan a little bit and, as well as the architecture, as we, kind of the time between the pre-app and this actual meeting. So we're just going to kind of show you how the plan has evolved a little bit over the last few months as well. So this is the pre-app plan that you all saw in your staff report and that John just presented as well. This was actually the second pre-application meeting that we had with staff. We made a couple of changes to, to get to this plan. Staff recommended adding a third product type, so we added the townhomes to this layout. They also gave us some really thoughtful comments about the publicly accessible private park. We previously had it kind of split across the neighborhood and we consolidated it and centralized it so that all these homes would have great access to that. Go to the next slide. This is the original architecture that we presented and that John just showed you as well. So a mix of two- and three-story alley-loaded, alley-loaded, single-family homes. And then on the next slide, we have the alley-loaded townhomes. So like I said, we've continued to evolve the plan. This one's a prettier one in color as well. So here you can see the three different product types. So that pale kind of tan color, those are the alley-loaded townhomes. The yellow color are two-story, single-family detached homes. And then the kind of orange color are three-story, single-family detached homes. We really wanted to front those homes on, you know, the perimeter street of 85th to the north, Irving to the west, and 84th to the east, or to the south, where we have Federal on the east side. We, this was a detail we worked out with staff during the MODP process to have a bigger buffer where those homes either side or front to Federal. And this was a detail we had also worked out in the MODP, where we have screen fence, birmingham and landscape material on that eastern edge to still have views looking southwest or southeast, but really kind of provide a buffer to Federal Boulevard. So we have a minimum 50-foot setback where the homes side to Federal and then a minimum 65-foot setback where the homes front to Federal. It also creates some variation of that view as you're driving along Federal instead of just seeing the sides of homes. So this plan meets all the perimeter setbacks that were established in the MODP. It also is consistent from a street framework with the framework plan that was in the MODP. We have kind of the east-west street starting at Irving that connects up to 85th and then a north-south local street kind of cutting through the middle of the site right next to that pocket park. Some additional refinements we worked through since our pre-app meeting, we got some good comments about consolidating some of the trail corridors between the homes to help get each home great access to that park. So instead of having, you know, more smaller corridors, we consolidated those into fewer, bigger corridors. And then we also just continue to refine kind of what these edges look like to make sure that we are creating a great view from outside of Uplands. I have to go to the next slide. And here you can see the evolution of the single-family detached homes. Really, the focus was trying to make these homes a little bit more consistent with what Westminster typically sees on their architecture. So more of a focus on enhanced masonry, especially on these street or public-facing views, working through some of the details on roof pitches over things, overhangs, things like that, to just better comply with what the city is typically seeing for architecture. Next slide, you can see, again, these are the single-family attached townhomes. That would be, I think primarily those are on, along the 84th frontage. Here's a lot of words on this slide. We certainly won't, won't read all these. As you all know, when we started working on the master plan for Uplands, both the PDP and the MODP, and just the PewDie zoning in general, we knew that we would have exceptions in order to get the vision for Uplands and also to provide the much-needed housing for the city. So if you go to the next slide, we have identified, we'll still work through these details, of course, but what we accept some of these, expect some of these exceptions to be. So starting with off-street parking, all of the single-family attached townhomes have two-car garages and three of the five floor plans for the single-family detached homes have two-car garages. The two remaining single-family floor plans have one-car garages. We are also planning to ride on-street parking throughout the entire local street network, including Irving and 85th to the north. So really trying to add that on-street parking to the local streets, which will also help slow down traffic. But still understanding the importance of having on-lot parking with those garages. The second one at the lower left of the screen is the entry median. This is something we'll continue to work through the details of with the ODP process. But instead of putting that entry median within the street, we are really focused on creating great entries at the corners or within our landscape buffers. We've spent a lot of time over the last couple of years working through the details of what our utilities need to look like, what our fire access needs to look like. And so we're trying to keep those local streets as narrow as possible and still meeting all those engineering requirements and trying to put curb kind of bump outs at the intersection so that people still have short distances to walk across the local street. So still meeting the same spirit and intent of creating great entries, just in a little bit different way. The next two on the right side of the screen have to do with landscape area. Single-family detached homes in the city's landscape regulations require 50% of each yard area to be landscaped. And then the single-family attached requirement requires a minimum of 40% of the overall site area to be landscaped. So this is really kind of finding the balance and the push and pull within these neighborhoods of what is the right amount of landscaping? We want to make sure that we're being really thoughtful about how much water we're using or not using, that we're planting low-water-use materials, only using turf when it's needed, and also trying to keep the lot sizes kind of better sized so that people can afford them. If we were to, for example, comply with both of these standards as written, we would just have bigger lots for people to buy and more land for people to have to water and less actual homes on the site. So it doesn't really kind of meet the goals that we were working with within Uplands to try and find that housing that's so very needed in the city. And then this is the last piece. These will, will likely have a couple of exceptions to the MODP related to lot depth and setbacks. It's a very similar story to what we were talking about with landscape regulations. You all know we have the public land dedication for Uplands as a whole. We really focused on meeting the perimeter setbacks so that our transition to the surrounding neighborhoods is very thoughtful and then providing those required for percent private parks. And so really wanting to give those public spaces to each of the residents and kind of right-sizing these lots to make up for that. For example, the lot depths are a little bit less than what is in the TEEMUN design guidelines. The rear setbacks, this is really kind of working through the details again of the engineering and fire department. We're trying to get those alleys as small as we possibly can, but there's a lot to fit in those. So kind of working through the details of where those garages can then sit adjacent to the utilities. Side setbacks, we're asking for a reduction in those. Really trying to get people to kind of utilize their front yards, their porches, decks as their private outdoor space. Corner setbacks, we're complying with the setback to the porch. It's just the living area will likely have a 10-foot setback from living area to alley or public street. And then the private outdoor space, instead of a standard rear yard or rear deck, we're looking at kind of compiling different areas, whether it's the side, front, rear yards, or different decks. We understand it's very important for people to have that private outdoor area, but it doesn't all need to be turf. It can come in a variety of different ways. So we're still working through the details of what that total square footage of private outdoor space. But as you saw in the elevations, there's a variety of porches and decks and front yards to help meet those details. And I think that is our full time.
Yes, mayor and councillors, I'll just add and say thank you so much for, again, hosting us and we'd love to hear your questions or comments, your advice and feedback on it. The one thing I will note is that there are, I guess, six other neighborhoods that are going into process, right, as we showed in that update slide. So we think this is a really important housing typology that we're bringing before you today on A seven. It's a very different housing typology. But one thing that Bonnie just said and really is framed by our discussion of the exceptions is we spent so much time talking about the edges of this site and planning from the outside end and really blending and adding pedestrian connectivity and kind of re-threading this into the neighborhoods that are there today. And you see that on all of our edges, how important we think that is as we transition to existing neighborhoods. So we're here for any comments, questions, and again, we have a full team that can go through any of the material that you may have.
Who wants up first?
Going, Miles, next time, this time.
I didn't bring any trivia with me.
I mean, if it's perfect as is, that's great, too.
Councillor Baker.
Somebody has to be first, right? Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, you're asking for exception, okay? And if I understand correctly, and this is probably for the city question, TEEMUN designs are much more dense than standard neighborhood designs, right?
As I recall, yes.
Okay, someone from the city?
So the overall density across parcel A should not exceed 18 dwelling units per acre. So there's a varied degree of housing types and styles.
I wasn't asking that. I was asking, TEEMUN standards are even more dense than our regular neighborhood standards. TEEMUND is a special designation, which I guess we don't have anymore, right? We got rid of that?
So that's correct. In the comprehensive plan, we replaced TEEMUN with, with mixed-use neighborhood.
Right.
The density is still the same. It's a maximum of 18 unless the city council approves a higher amount.
Right, okay. And what being asked for here is exceptions to even the TEEMUND standards, correct?
Well, just to be clear that, and Bonnie can go through that in detail, the exceptions that we're seeking are exceptions not to that overall density, right, to your first question. They're exceptions to some of the design guidelines and what is in code. So again, we went to kind of the general provisions and then you are right. These are the examples of exceptions that we would be asking for.
Yeah, so when we did the original PDP and the master official development plan, specifically in the master official development plan, we had listed probably seven or eight different building forms that we expected to see in Uplands. And we had pulled the setbacks from the TEEMUN design guidelines as a starting point. We did not want to ask for exceptions at the PDP or the MODP process because we couldn't show you what this stuff looked like. It seems a lot harder to approve an exception across the board for five-foot setbacks when you don't even know what these buildings or the lotting plan looked like. So we were consistent with the TEEMUN design guidelines in what we put in the MODP. And so this, these would be asking for exceptions to that MODP now that we can show you what those site plan details look like.
Okay. And as an example, your side setback was seventeen, seven feet, and now you want to reduce it to four feet?
Yes.
So it was going to be 14 feet between buildings and now it's eight feet?
That, yes, that's consistent with what was written in 2007 within the TEEMUN design guidelines, but isn't consistent with what we see in the market today just because home prices have changed since 2007, lot sizes have changed since 2007, water usage has changed since 2007. So really trying to right-size these lots to what we see in the market today and kind of, you know, what is consistent with the vision that we had put in the original Uplands PDP and MODP and what the housing need assessment says the city needs.
Okay. And these lots will then sit surrounded by either HOA property or a street?
Yep.
Okay. And really, your only street through, well, you have two streets through there and they make the cross with, with the trees on either side. But every other thing in there is an alley, which will be have to maintained by who?
That would be likely the HOA as well.
Okay. And I was under the impression that 40% of a site had to be open ground. I remember with those townhomes we approved at Pearson 92nd, you know, there was, there was, they were, I think, almost 40%, but not quite and stuff like that. This can't be meeting those guidelines, is it?
I think you're referring to the 40% landscape area and the landscape regulations. So that was one of the exceptions that we said we would likely be asking for.
Okay. So this is mostly hardscape, correct? Either roofs or alleys or roads?
I mean, we don't have all the specific numbers yet, but yeah. The also, one of the pieces that is, we can't specifically answer today is, if you go back to our site plan.
Sure.
So the, the colored boxes, you see the beige, the yellow, that's kind of orange-colored, that's the maximum building envelope, but there's different floor plans. And so some floor plans will be smaller and there'll be additional open area on those lots as well.
Yeah, and councillor Baker, I'll just add that that's why we thought it was important, that kind of overall Uplands update. This is a small neighborhood between 84th and 85th, right? So it's important to remember the PLD that sits around in Uplands. You have to look then at A seven in that lower right-hand corner and think of that. So when you say that about the parks and open space, then you look at the larger parks that are planned just north of the site. So it's really, it's a challenge to think of this in that larger context of the, the neighborhoods as well.
Right. Well, I was just thinking that in a severe rainstorm, with this mostly being hardscapes, all this water is going to pour down onto PAA four and PAA three and then down onto Shaw Heights, which you're doing extensive rebuilding of, correct?
That is correct, sir. That's happening.
They're actually using Shaw Boulevard as like an enormous spillway.
No, and we can clarify that. I'd be happy to clarify that because that's not correct. Chad, you want to go through that?
Yeah.
I'll go back just to this, if it's okay councillor, to show this slide, maybe, if that's best to answer that on.
Good evening, Chad Ellington. The storm drainage effort as a, Uplands as a whole is decreasing the floodplain that exists today on Shaw Boulevard. We're doing that by building a pond right where the big green asterisk is right there.
Correct, yeah.
And that will detain.
And that's almost 10 acres, isn't it?
The side, the land area, probably about five.
Okay, five acres.
And it's a pond that's designed and engineered to detain the storm flows in the event you're talking about, councillor Baker, where you have a big rain event that's held in that pond and released at a lower rate than it's released at today. Impervious or, like, it takes into all the, takes into account all the imperviousness that we're adding to the site. So captures that. And then we're running storm drains through Shaw Boulevard and taking things underground in a pipe that today would go across the surface of Shaw Boulevard. And the floodplain will then be reduced out of many of the front yards of Shaw Boulevard from what happens today, even with the increased imperviousness.
Okay, good. And I know the confusion between retention ponds and detention ponds and you tear your hair out.
And water quality.
As you say the wrong thing, someone jumps on you.
Completely fair, yeah.
My next question is, what about a fire? When we reduce all these side setbacks and back setbacks and everything else and... When we reduce all these side setbacks and back setbacks and everything else, and we saw one with houses 20 feet apart in Marshall Fire, and then in poor Oke of the Lahaina, which was even closer than this, it was just devastating. And if we have very small access, aren't we at risk to see entire blocks burn up?
Well, to answer that question, I would just say we worked very closely with the Westminster Fire Department on exactly the criteria that they wanted us to do. So we spent the better part of a couple of months going through their, exactly how their arms will reach from their fire apparatus, reaches, where access comes from in the event of a fire, and location A, B, C, D, E. They have technical criteria that we have to follow to the T, and so this plan is in process of addressing all of those comments that we received from FIRE, which are exactly, to your point, how do you get to the building? How do you get to it with the equipment? What if this scenario happens? What if that scenario happens? And so we worked very closely with them to accommodate all of the needs that they need for reach, distance, hose lengths, all of those things.
Right, because, I mean, really, the only place they're gonna be able to put on their fire trucks is 85th Avenue, 84th Avenue, and?
Yeah.
Eighty-fourth Place.
Yeah, most of the fire truck access actually ends up in the alley because the perimeter setbacks are actually too big. They can't park on 84th, for example, and get their ladder to a house on 84th. So a lot of the fire access actually comes from the alley because they have better proximity to each of the homes, so.
And we can move fire trucks through those 30-foot alleys?
Yep, so we, with these, we've, you know, talked through, like Chad said, months and months, working through these, and our kind of next step with this specific neighborhood is literally drawing cross-sections through all these alleys and showing exactly where the fire truck goes, where the outrigger goes, where the alley, the ladder goes, and how it falls on the back of the house. Like, we were practically at the point of doing a 3D model of fire access. It's very detailed to make sure the fire trucks can not only go through those, but they can fit all their very specific pieces and angles, and it's quite the math problem.
Yeah, last thing, Councilors, it's such a fair question, but our compliments, honestly. Your requirements for residential sprinklers also changes that scenario. We have to do all of the things we just detailed, but your requirement for that is really kind of leads the metro area, and we honor that and appreciate that, and that'll be included as well.
As a side note, I just have to say, when the fire trucks take Santa around, I've been in many alleys, and they fit just perfect. And Santa can get in.
As long as Santa can come, that's really the most important.
And then the next area I want to talk about is parking.
Yes, sir.
Okay, most of these have two-car garages, and a sprinkling have one, but don't we need four parking spaces for a single-family detached?
So, yes, that's one of the exceptions we'll likely be asking for. It's four spaces for a single-family detached, and then two spaces for attached with one per three for guest parking. So part of our official ODP supplemental, what we'll do is provide a very detailed count of what we have for on-street parking within the neighborhood. We won't count any on-street parking on 84th, and then, of course, it's not on federal. To, our goal is to provide that same amount of parking, just in a different way, within the neighborhood. We haven't gotten to that level of detail on what all those counts would be, but that would be our goal.
So, I mean, that's another waiver issue.
Yep, that's one of the exceptions we said we'd likely ask for.
Well, I mean, those are my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mayor Procham?
I guess my first piece of feedback is around the parking. Obviously, that's always something that is a struggle. Granted, I understand some of these different living situations, like Bradburn, even it's a little bit different compared to traditional, but, you know, in my mind, the goal is to make sure that the parking from a new neighborhood doesn't spill out. And so I'm glad to hear that you're gonna look at that, because that certainly will be a question with any official development that comes forward.
And sorry to interrupt there, but did we talk about the square footage of the homes?
We did not.
Okay, so these are smaller homes. The square footage ranges from, am I putting myself on the spot?
13 to 1800.
1300 to 800, 1800 square feet. So by design, they're almost like detached townhomes, smaller homes.
Very helpful, so probably not like.
Four, they're not gonna be two, three, four drivers in most of these homes.
That's.
So smaller homes, less cars, theoretically, obviously, we don't police how many people live there and how many driver's licenses are already each home, but by design, they're smaller, they should require less parking than the codes that are contemplating larger homes.
Good, I appreciate that clarification, because that is helpful, I think, when you look at overall parking. But that leads into the other thing that I want to make sure that we're clear on, and I understand, Councilor Baker asked about T-Mund versus, you know, where we're at with this versus that. I think I heard Mr. McConnell say that this does not, even with those changes in standards, this is not exceeding what's allowed, because I heard a comment that it was. And I'll be frank, somebody's been telling the community that, because I've been fielding calls, the mayor and I were together on a non-city-related thing, and she heard one of the calls I took today, and it was all around that this is gonna allow this development to be densified in a way that's not allowed, and I want to make sure that I understand that is not what's being proposed.
That's correct. The approved master official development plan has the density numbers per planning area that were approved, and the applicant would not be allowed to exceed those numbers.
Okay.
I think we're under those numbers.
Yeah, the MOTP allows 191 units in this neighborhood, and I think we were at 180.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that right, and I was hearing correctly, because I think, because that's, you know, consistent with, you know, the whole zoning approval that we did, you know, there was a lot of talk around proper density, and even with our comprehensive plan, we've really looked at density and what makes sense for the city. So I wanted to make sure I understood that. Aside from that, you know, I appreciate the update, and I know that these meetings are, you know, more meant to be helpful to you guys and non-Bidening, but, you know, nothing in this plan I find out aligned with kind of, you know, where we've been with you guys so far. So I appreciate the update and seeing kind of what's starting to come to fruition.
Great.
Councilor Nemele?
I think it would be helpful, as we go through all of these developments as they come, is to have a table that shows, there's where we are with the unit count, and has a change from the PDP, because I imagine you might have a unit here, a unit there, or whatever, but so we can keep track.
It's a great idea.
And, you know, it also helps us keep track with, I know there is an affordable housing requirement for a certain amount of units to be built, and with that, and affordable housing to come at the first half, so that we can track all of that. And then at the same time, I think it would be helpful to include Park acreage in that table. You know, I'm seeing for A parcel, little A, for all of the A blocks, there's 11 acres, I believe, on top of the parks, that would be in the individual blocks. And so when I looked at .67 acre park, I was like, well, if I divide that by 11 by the 10 blocks, I would think I would have more than one acre coming in. But, you know, so as we are going, it would be helpful to see that as well.
Kind of an MOTP-PDP compliance table.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, and then, you know, as you're going through and providing, I guess, in the next step, for the waivers that you're asking for, it might be helpful to have images of these types of, you know, I'm sure there are similar products that, you know, when you're talking about, oh, these homes are 40 feet apart, what does that look like? I mean, you can draw it, but what does it look like? I mean, you have, you know, Bradburn Prospect, whatever that project is called, in Adams County that I'm spacing on, mid-something.
Midtown.
Midtown, thank you. So that would be helpful for us to have actual real-life examples. And then, so side, let's see, I will always be a broken record on when we have built homes that face onto these, the paseos, to make sure that there's, you know, I like to shoot for.
I did some math on this just for you, Sarah, because I knew you were gonna ask this question. And we actually, I lost the math. So that, right now, the narrowest green court we have in there is.
Between the two townhomes.
It's, what was that?
Between the two townhomes.
Yes, yep, it's, so it's 15 feet lot line to lot line, and then we have, I think it's a minimum eight foot to porch, so that is 31 feet porch to porch, and then it's further for the actual living area. So I think it was like 40-some feet, and those townhomes are just two stories, not three stories. So that was something we paid a lot of attention to, to make sure that those, because those spaces can feel really cramped if they get tight.
I am mollified, okay. I will just say this, having lived in Bradburn, two things. One, there was a play area in a very similar park space, and the neighbors hated hearing children laughing, and, you know. But they, so they got rid of the park, the little playground set. So I would just be cognizant, as you're planning these little pocket parks.
Sure.
You know, design it so that the happy kids can be, not as.
Not on the street, not next to the homes.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just, I would rather.
Keep the happiness out of the neighborhood.
We'll put outside, no laughing.
Keep the happiness. But maybe, you know, I just don't want to lose the happiness by, you know, having it too close to residents.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Okay, and then, just segueing into the parking component, I don't feel like, I'd be interested to understand what Bradburn is like, because I don't feel like it's hard to park there. I'm looking at Dave Frankel because he lives there. Sorry.
He can neither confirm nor.
Yeah, I mean, he once was seen to be there. But I think, you know, having lived there myself, I don't feel like it was difficult to park, and believe it or not, we were in an 1800-square-foot townhome with three adults who drove and two children, so we packed in there because we needed to, but we were able to, I mean, just with two parking spaces and the townhome and like right in front, we were good to go. So I'm not overly concerned, I just, it would be a good comparison point. And I think, I'm glad to hear just overall, oh, just for the, for the dimensions, for, can you go to that waiver?
Sure, the exceptions?
Exceptions. For the Uplands, for the private outdoor space, it would just be helpful to kind of set some standards, instead of just saying it varies. As you come.
Yes.
Because, you know, five-foot depth for an outdoor space is a little small, so you're just kind of, like, what are you, what are you trying to achieve? What is the light access?
Yeah, in the ODP, we'll have very specific information and dimensions, and make sure that they're actually usable, and we'll make sure that's all in there.
But as we come forward on this or other applications, I think that's something really for us to focus on, kind of general guidance, right, with the housing typology, because a lot of that depends on that housing typology or if it's alley-loaded, right? So we'll, we'll try to have a little better guidance, so we just don't say it varies.
Yeah, that would be good. And again, just pictures, because I know these, these housing typologies exist elsewhere, and they've been, you know, I agree, T-Mund is a really good start, and in terms of creating more, you know, options for housing types, but I know there can be changes afoot here, afoot there. And then I'm just happy to hear that you're working so closely with Chief Menard and with his experience, too. I imagine that's very helpful.
Yes.
So, yeah, overall, generally okay with that? Hopefully, you know, when we get to the park spaces, hopefully at some point, there are, some of them can be more separated out of the front yards of the homes. I know that's a little more street frontage, but I would try and vary that up and have some that are fully surrounded by a street.
Great. Councilor, I did, and I just wanted to tell you that, and we'll be thoughtful about this moving forward, these different parcels, and kind of almost that dashboard about what was in the MOTP, right, and how we're complying with it. I think that's a terrific solution. I will just say, and we'll work with your city attorney, we tried to be extremely cautious this time, because there is this six neighborhoods in process, right, and kind of where they are in their own process, the quasi-judicial. So on the right, I failed to mention that, but just, those are the neighborhoods that are moving now, the products that are happening already. So two of those six neighborhoods are affordable housing communities. So they're ahead of this, right? This is concept review. So it's interesting that we're before you first on A7 when six other projects or six neighborhoods are moving forward. Couldn't agree more. We'll update. I think that's a great idea to show the comparison, also actually to Councilor Baker's question as well, just like what was in the underlying ODP or MOTP, and how are we complying with that vision? It's great.
That'd be good, and, oh, just one point. A thank you for improving the architecture from the first.
Absolutely. You bet. And we didn't start with it not improved, we just keep improving on it, so yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, will be interested to see how the parking works out, because there's really not much of an area for safety, for spillover out of the neighborhood.
Yes, agreed.
The way that is a bit landlocked. I do appreciate the update on the stormwater and drainage, because that's a critical issue. And then I do appreciate the fact that the private space will be variable. There's nothing worse than lining up with every one of your neighbors, I mean, it's fun for deck parties, but you don't always want to have, yeah, looking at your neighbors. So if you're utilizing the best use of that space and not necessarily lining them up, and it creates a, like, you know, you can hear your neighbors chatting three doors down because their deck's lined up with yours, so appreciate that. That's all I had.
I just appreciate Councilor Nemele, because this is her jam.
Yeah.
She's mollified.
I honestly, I don't see any issues with it. I think it's, I really appreciate this review process. I really feel like it's, I thought, and it might feel like a hindrance to developers, but I really feel like this is actually hitting the target from the beginning and that towards the end, and so I feel like this process is very beneficial for council and for residents to just kind of see the process all the way through. So I really don't have much feedback from what everybody else provided, the parking, and then, you know, townhomes, I live in a townhome myself, so it's, it's a needed product within our city, so I don't have any more, any further feedback.
Just thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it, and I appreciate Councilor Nemele as well, I think. It's, it's like a massage on the brain, hearing you speak.
I didn't know what a paseo was.
That is not sarcasm, it's really great.
My question is probably for staff.
Sure.
We talk and talk and talk about how we need to reduce green Kentucky bluegrass, and I look at this picture, and all along federal, and probably 84th, even down Irving. When are we going to start making different kinds of expectations for landscaping? I've heard it for 10 years?
Mayor, can I jump in and just clarify that a little bit and what our plan is showing?
I'm not going with you. I know what some of your thoughts are, you've shared with us before. I'm saying, when is the city going to start embracing zero-scaping? And I've seen a lot of beautiful things that don't have Kentucky bluegrass over the summer. And I know, every time I go past Lexington and know it's in their ODP, they signed off on it, but it's almost impossible without spending thousands of dollars to go back and be able to redo things, even when an HOA is using, they know how much water they're using every month, that could be going someplace else. Anyway, I just ask us as a city, when are we going to start embracing it? And we're almost at build-out. And so when folks like these come and ask for some variances, I think we should jump at it so we have things for other developers to look at successfully. But that's just my opinion. Yes.
How are we gonna handle snow there?
I wasn't sure if you were gonna ask a question, but I'm happy to comment on that. This. Uh, this applicant, many others we've worked with recently have really embraced the principles in the landscape regulations regarding zero scapeing. Um, those regulations don't require turf and we help applicants like this, um, find ways to, to create green spaces without that. I'm pretty sure you all haven't, um, finished your landscaping plans for this, you're in the initial stages. But some of the other official development plans that we've been working with you on, they really have, uh, reduced the, the, um, the, the landscaping out of those high and moderate water usage zones into the low water usage zones. So, so we're definitely taking strides to work with these applicants with the land that we have left and the, and the development potential that we have left, but yes, I, I know you all are interested in that as well.
Great. We support it wholeheartedly as well.
Counselor Baker?
How are you gonna handle really, okay, okay, the snowfall and snow really removal?
Yes.
That, um, I can answer that. Um, so that'll be part of kind of this next, uh, layer of refinement with this concept plan. Um, as part of the official development plans that we've been working on for uplands and will of course do it for this neighborhood too, um, we actually locate those areas on the site plan. Um, they're often off of alleys or places are easily, easy for the snow to push. Um, and then along with, you know, zero scape plant, uh, materials, we also look at plant materials that are a little bit more salt tolerant in those locations. Um, so that it's not just a barren place that gets snow on it a handful of years, but actually looks like thoughtful landscape that can handle snow when it's, uh, piled on there. So that's something that will be a part of the details in the ODP.
Thank you.
Anything else from anyone? Thank you so much for your presentation and bringing us along. Yeah, I agree with Counselor Emmons, it's just a great way to not feel like we're boxed in at the final hour and we go, well, why didn't they think of this or this? This gives everybody an opportunity to share and you don't have to do a thing with it, but at least you listen.
That's right, we appreciate it very much, it's a great process, absolutely.
So I have to make one last statement. As stated the outset of the concept plan review, counselor comments are gratuitous and do not bind or obligate the applicant, city staff, the planning commission, or city council to any course of action or future decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A break now?
You do?
Yes, okay.
She dodged it.
City manager, what's up next?
All right, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, um, uh, you had asked us, oh, probably a month or so ago, to come back and talk to you about, uh, um, noise, how you monitor, how you maintain, how you police noise in the city. Um, and so the team took a look at that and we're here to present that tonight. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to Rachel Patterson. Uh, she's our resident, uh, subject matter expert. She's joined by, uh, our acting community development and department head director, um, Eric Otzelberger. So Rachel, are you gonna kick us off or is Eric going to?
I was gonna do a brief intro, so, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, Manager Freitag. Um, we're here this evening, I'm thrilled that Rachel Patterson's joining us. She's been with us a little over six months here at the City of Westminster, but has fifteen years of local government experience in, um, this strange business of, of code enforcement. Um, she also, want to bring on her a little bit, she serves on the Board of Directors for the Colorado Chapter of the International Code Council. Um, strong leader, does a lot of training, not just stateside, but nationwide. Um, has done a lot of things recently, last year was down in Kentucky with their chapter, Mississippi. So we're, we're very thrilled to have her expertise, uh, with us here in the city. And I'm really excited about the future with her here. And Rachel's going to go through, um, some data, both comparative data, some, some call data for us and some code information, and then I'll close with, uh, a recommendation. I'll turn it over to Rachel.
Good evening, wow, what a great introduction. Good evening, Mayor McNally, councilors, and everyone else in attendance. So as stated, we are here this evening to talk about noise ordinance concepts and enforcement consideration, and we'll just jump right into it. This topic was brought up in regard to concerns related to noise and what generates noise. Um, some related to the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, some related to vehicles and street racing, some related to residents, businesses, and loud music. During this time, calls for service were pulled and it was found that seventy-five thousand one hundred and ninety-three calls for service were called into the Westminster Police Department. Of that, one thousand twelve were related to noise. What we found was of those one thousand twelve, noise calls for service were either found unfounded, unable to locate, or unresolved, or excuse me, resolved, my apologies. Nine hundred and thirty-three encompasses that number. Noise enforcement options were considered and during this process, twenty-five surrounding jurisdictions where, um, data was compiled from and reviewed as far as how they address their noise. During the compiling of the data, we found that fifteen of our major neighboring jurisdictions enforce noise through a standalone noise ordinance. Ten of those enforce noise through enforcement actions such as what we do here in the city of Westminster. Of those cities that we compiled data from, our major cities were City of Thornton, where they do have an unlawful noise ordinance, City and County of Broomfield, and the Town of Erie. Some of those individual cities that do not have lawful noise ordinances include the Federal Heights, North Glen, and others, my apologies.
And, and we have a list of those jurisdictions, um, but we just, the overall, what we wanted to leave you with is, um, it's, it's not, you know, it's kind of a sixty-forty split, um, as far as a standalone versus a variety of specific language, uh, sections in, in code. And, and that's what Rachel's gonna talk about here with, uh, what we have on the books with existing Westminster municipal code.
So absolutely, thank you, Eric. With that, um, we considered options for our current regulations, which include disturbing the peace, um, which also consists of disorderly conduct, where you find your vehicle noise, street racing, things of that nature. Um, animal noise, which I heard Counselor Baker, um, speak to, home occupations, official development plans, oil and gas regulations, liquor licensed establishments, dance halls, and noise within parks and rec open spaces. So all of these functions have municipal codes related to enforcement of noise already within their current ordinances. Now, when we're looking at pros and cons of option A, which is continuing with our current approach, you find in community engagement and mediation of noise concerns. This is a way that we're able to communicate with our community and connect with our community. No equipment or special training is typically required to mediate and mitigate these noise concerns. Um, and sincere interactions are aimed at our good neighbor and community policing policies. Possible cons that you see with these particular approaches, um, is we certainly do not address airport noise. As you are aware, we are located in the general area, however, um, the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport sits in the City and County of Broomfield, or excuse me, Jefferson County. And with that, it's not something that we, um, as the city can regulate, as the FAA. Possible subjective noise, excuse me, possible subjef, sec, wow, subjective enforcement of ordinances is also something to consider. And then prosecution and municipal court, whether that's something that we can take a case from start to finish and actually be able to prosecute. a case from start to finish and actually be able to prosecute. So options also considered. As far as a pro and con, my apologies here, Eric, did you want to take this one?
Sure. So with a potential dedicated noise ordinance, of course, that would look at instituting deployment of ANSI certified decibel meters. So that certainly would introduce more objective enforcement measures and provide a clearer standard and more processes. However, it's, that isn't a panacea. I think my understanding is the impetus behind this discussion is around the airport and this option as well does not address airplane noise. In another jurisdiction, Rachel led these efforts from ordinance creation through training and deployment with this type of approach. You know, there are significant operational demands on training for staff, equipment availability. It's not just something, you know, a decent decibel meter runs about $1, $1,500 a unit. So they're not overly cost prohibitive. However, you don't just buy it and you're good. Ongoing calibration, malfunctions. Rachel or I, we're not going to pretend to be sound engineers or acoustical experts. Mayor McNally, you may recall from some transportation adventures with, back when we were working on US 36, berms versus walls, and having consultation with these folks. There are a variety of environmental considerations that come to noise, atmospheric conditions. You know, it's a fascinating science. You know, I'd like to be here to tell you, well, it's black and white with the decibel meter, but in Rachel's lived this boots-on-the-ground enforcing, it's not so much that way. And I think sometimes there's a misnomer that, well, you know, whether it's one of Chief Hobbert's officers or one of our code enforcement officers, we get these decibel readings, case closed. If we're not getting voluntary compliance, we see our friends in the municipal court. Good defense attorneys can mount a significant challenge to this as well. So, you know, if-if, you know, we're here to provide information and answer questions this evening. Our job isn't to create policy. Our job is to provide you the best information and then implement policy. So if there was a desire by majority of council to go down the road with implementing a standalone noise ordinance, we would really look to kind of scope this out during the fourth quarter of this year. We would recommend returning to you with actual draft ordinance language in December. Then city council consideration of the actual ordinance would be in January. Then we'd have to start operationally on procurement of equipment, training development, field training for officers, and field implementation. It's important to note, we coordinated very closely with our friends in the police department, with city attorney's office, and looking at this item, you know, both with looking at the data that we have and just considerations. And in partnership with our colleagues, our recommendation this evening would be to continue with our existing approach. I'm a scalpel versus hammer person and we have eight different, not actually nine different specific code sections that give our officers and tools in the field, considering violent crime, property crime, nuisance properties, physical, environmental impacts. You know, we do our best to manage the finite resources we have. Can we go down the other path? Absolutely. But, you know, it's up to council to decide, you know, is that juice worth the squeeze? We have tools and I would just leave you with a little anecdote. You know, I won't include names for anonymity, but there was a very interesting noise case that came out of the Arrowhead neighborhood where there were seven different departments within the city that had a touch on this. Excel Energy had a touch on this. And I was just astounded by the extra mile our staff collectively went through. I worry, not being cynical, if it's just a decibel meter, in this case, let's say just for the sake of discussion, we had a decibel standard, staff member goes out there, well, this isn't hitting the limit, done. When Rachel's talking about mediation facilitation, good neighbor standard, it was actually one of our officers that got to the bottom of it. It was a malfunctioning medical device, there was no noise. It was a tinnitus. It's a whole deal and I won't go into it here. But my point is, I really respect and admire the addition, you know, the sort of the, you know, the negotiation and facilitation our staff, you know, the extra mile they go to. So I wouldn't recommend a standalone noise ordinance. And with that, Chief Hobbert, legal advisor, Jenna Roth's here, Rachel here, we're here to answer any questions you might have.
To make it short and sweet, I'm going to ask how many agree with their
Recommendation.
Recommendation. A. Continue as we're doing.
I have a question though. So the 15 cities you mentioned with noise ordinances, if these are so ineffective, have you spoken to them, staff there, what's the feedback as to how those are working and why do they have one?
Well, Counselor Azadi, I think we have the good fortune of have someone who's been boots on the ground for a while that has worked cases. And Rachel, if you don't mind just talking about sort of the challenges that come with enforcing with decibel meters.
Certainly. You know, we speak to the subjectivity of it all and essentially even with having those ANSI devices, there's still, you know, room for error, human error. Those devices need to be calibrated a certain way numerous times throughout the year. Devices need to be held in a certain manner in which to accurately collect the data in which you're collecting. They need to be pointed in a certain direction. There's just numerous factors that come into play. When taking a case from start to finish all the way through the municipal court process, sometimes often it's difficult to speak to those factors which are, you know, environmental at times, ambient noise, there's certain things that are, that are, you're just unable to prove in a court of law at times.
So my question was the inverse, why do they have those ordinances? What are the benefits for them?
Counselor Azadi, there certainly, it's another piece of data. It's another tool in the tool belt. But I think though, you know, to my knowledge, those jurisdictions, you know, they face similar challenges, similar resource challenges that we do as well. And I, when you get into, okay, who actually has the training on these devices, the deployment, the availability, if this is a non-emergency sort of function, you know, we have current staffing levels, and just speaking for code enforcement, to provide coverage Monday through Friday. If there are after-hours incidents, you know, that's usually a police matter. And I think as you saw from the data that Rachel shared, there, that's a good chunk of calls related to noise issues. And I think as you see from the data, there, and we put more data in the staff report, about 1% of those cases resulted in charges. And was it 6% or 7% had had some sort of action associated with it? But one of our planners who will remain nameless said, oh, could you do something about the motorcycle noise on 88th? You know, a lot of this is, you know, versus, let's say, a nuisance property issue that's there. Unfortunately, noise can be a bit fleeting at times. So, you know, each jurisdiction, it's a tool. I think practically speaking, with those nine code references that we have that are very specific, I know for a fact animal control will write summonses related to dog issues. You know, it seems like we have more of a scalpel approach versus an overall approach.
So did you speak to the other cities as to, and ask them for their opinions as to why they have one?
No, we did not.
Do you know when they implemented their ordinances? So was it recently or was it a long time ago? And I get the whole point, you know, we have nine code sections that make us a little different, presumably. I mean, have we looked in their codes and do they have similar? You know, so I'm just curious.
Yes, sir. I can speak specifically to the three jurisdictions that I brought up. In the City of Thornton, the noise ordinance has been in, on the books, I believe, eight years now. And that was derived from another ordinance that was just specifically created to give a little bit more teeth, tools, per se. In the town of Erie, the noise ordinance was just passed last year. I'm the one who produced that ordinance and it was passed. And then another one is the City and County of Broomfield. That was passed on an emergency ordinance last year related to oil and gas, but that also came off to deal with the problem holistically. And yes, I did speak with each of the representative communities.
And they said, what are the benefits for them, for Erie and Broomfield?
Having that tool, it's taking the subjectivity out of it in some cases, having another tool there to be able to, especially when you're enforcing. And say as a police officer, a code enforcement officer, you arrive at a home for a call for service. Typically, when you have another device or another tool in your tool belt to help you essentially mediate the situation, you do see an increase in compliance.
Last question, do you know if they, if Erie or Broomfield has, have similar code sections that we do, the scalpel approach? Do they also have that on top of their?
From what research I've done, some of the municipalities are similar to having disturbing the peace, obviously, in the police department, liquor licensing, home occupations. Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Just my questions are kind of similar. Just for the thousand some odd complaints that we get, are they in general within the buckets of those nine different ordinances that we already have?
Counselor Namara, I would, without going into not having specific numbers, just more anecdotally, a lot of them are party calls, loud noise disturbance, loud stereos, those types of things, generally speaking, on nights and weekends, not during business hours. And the majority of those are handled within the codes that we already have. Having a decibel meter for us, yes, it would prove or it would give us another tooth to go, see it is loud. Generally speaking, we document for court where we parked, how far it was down the street that, you know, we could hear the stereo at your house four houses down, you know, approximate, you know, measure as far as that goes. And usually, that fits the reasonable standard when we get to court. So most of those are taken care of through our current ordinances.
Okay. And I can speak to the official development side of it and the code enforcement, essentially the same process. We deal with that through the official development plans, through construction noise, through zoning regulations and things of that nature.
Okay. So it feels like we're pretty well covered and, okay.
And I'd offer just on the official development plan, nothing precludes us from placing decibel limits and to protect the innocent, or I won't say which one, but we do have an ODP that has a decibel limit because there's some light industrial activity. And this was years, a couple of years ago, but we did, we achieved voluntary compliance, but we actually brought out a decibel meter because there was an explicit requirement in the ODP. And ODPs take primacy over Westminster municipal code. So at least from the land use and from that standpoint, if there was some sort of concern about compatibility, that is a tool that the city has to be more explicit and more targeted with specific developments.
I would just wish we would do more for construction air quality because, my goodness, when the project up at 128 was going, all I saw was just dirt in the air for many, many weeks. But anyway, thank you, that was very helpful.
I know for me, good neighbor has worked because when the Weston used to have their parties out on the west side of the Weston, and if we were in our front yards, we were there. And one day, talking to the owners, I just said, you know, it's not that we don't like them, but when it starts going beyond nine and 10 o'clock, people are trying to get their little kids to bed, whatnot. I said, come over to the house. So he, on the back porch, you could hear it, but when he went to the front yard and you can hear every word, he goes, oh my gosh, and they started putting it on the other side of the West. So, good neighbor. So again, who's in favor of their option A? Leave it as it is. Looks like you've got seven votes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Thanks, Howard.
Remind me, do we have, do I have to ask three times when we're with each person?
We have agendized one title for an exec session tonight. Mayor.
Do we have reason for executive session?
We do. We have proposed an executive session, discussion of a personnel matter for quarterly check-ins on the annual review process specific to the presiding judge, the city attorney, and the city manager pursuant to Westminster municipal code, section 111, 3C1, Colorado revised statute 246402, 4F1.
I will go around the room and ask councilors if you're willing to go into executive session.
Toby Azadi, yes.
Rich Seymour, yes.
The Emmens, yes.
Bruce, Baker, yes.
Dave Demat, yes.
Sarah Nermala, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Dave Frankel, I would hold it confidential, yes.
I thought we had to do that once we were in.
Apologies. So now that you have the vote.
Because the doors are still open.
I would ask then that we change over to the executive session recording and conclude this evening's podcast.